It is five thirty and I will call this Steenville City Council meeting to order. I've asked Mr. Coates to lead us in the books.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored and protected society, our legislative agency, Texas, one state under God, one and invisible.
We have President John Barnes from Timberbridge.
Yes, correct.
Give us the indication.
Yeah, absolutely. God, I want to thank you so much for today. I want to thank you, Father, for everything that's about to happen. You already know. Lord, I thank you for these men and women that give of their time, energy, Lord, to guide and to lead out. Lord, I pray, Father, for wisdom today. We know that wisdom comes from you. So, God, all the things that are before us, God, give discernment, give guidance. And, Lord, thank you for the wonderful city that we get to call home, that you've given us this time and place to celebrate and live life and to see you through. And we love you. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thanks, sir. All right. I have a quick proclamation to read, recognizing Steenville as the cowgirl capital on September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five. So, City of Steenville Cowgirl Capital Day. Whereas the City of Steenville cherishes and honors its longstanding cultural identity as the cowboy capital of the world, celebrated for being home to more professional rodeo cowboys and cowgirls than any other place in the world. And whereas the equine and rodeo traditions of Steenville, including its cowboy capital Walk of Fame, the cowboy capital P R C A Rodeo, and its enduring western heritage are deeply woven into the fabric of this community. And whereas the city recognizes not only the contributions of its celebrated cowboys, but also the courage, grace, and pioneering spirit of all the cowgirls who have helped shape the legacy of the American West. And whereas September eighth, two thousand twenty-five, the start of the two thousand twenty-five Rodeo Heritage Week presents an ideal opportunity to spotlight and celebrate those cowgirls, honoring their strength, independence, and indelible impact on traditions and soul of Steenville. Now, therefore, I, David Basket, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Steenville, do hereby proclaim September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, as Cowgirl Capital Day. Do we have anybody here representing? We'll give this over to them. Next item on the agenda, consider approval of Atmos Mid-Tex two thousand twenty-five R R M settlement resolution. Mr. King.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, as y'all are aware, we are members of what is called the Mid-Texas Cities, served by Atmos Energy Corporation, and we're a member of that steering committee. And so Atmos had filed a rate review mechanism to review their rates. This dates back to an agreement from two thousand seven under a statute known as the Gas Reliability Infrastructure Program Legislation. As originally proposed, their request was for two hundred and forty-five point two million in new revenue. And so our steering committee, again, which is one hundred and eighty-one other cities represented by a law firm worked with Atmos, and that has been lowered to two hundred and twenty-five point six million. One hundred and sixty-three point five of that would then be applicable to our one hundred and eighty-one cities. Our firm that represents all the cities is recommending approval of the resolution endorsing this rate review mechanism.
Any questions for Mr. King? We also have Dylan Kuhn here with us that's with Atmos. If there's any questions for Mr. Kuhn, he's here to answer as well. It's a pleasure of the council.
Mayor, I'd move to approve the Atmos Mid-Tex settlement. That would be Resolution two oh two five R fifteen.
We have a motion by Mr. Nix, second by Ms. Smith. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And I apologize. I actually skipped over the citizens' general discussion. Is there anybody that wishes to speak in the citizens' general discussion other than a topic that's already on the agenda? Here none. I will go down to item number three, consider approval of election contract with E R F County Clerk's Office for the two thousand twenty-five special election. Ms. Lockenhour.
Mayor Pro Tem and council, this item is standard. When we have an election, we contract with the E R F County Clerk's Office to run the election for us. So, this contract is allowing them to do that. So, we're seeking approval of the contract.
Any questions for Ms. Lockenhour?
Are these the same terms that we've worked with them in the past?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Anything else?
Mayor, I'd make the motion to approve the contract for the conducting of the special election in November.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Nix, second by Mr. Coates. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Lockenhour. Consider approval of interlocal agreement with E R F County of assessment and collection of taxes. Mr. King.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, if you recall, we discussed this during our budget hearing back in August. And E R F County is wanting to update our agreements with the Tax Assessor's Office for performing the service of collection of taxes. That has been billed at the same rate evidently since that first transition from us and the ISD doing it to the county doing it. So, somewhere back in the eighties, it's been at the same rate. And so Judge Huckabee, the Commissioner's Court, and the Tax Assessor's Office have kind of gone through and figured out what those costs should be today and are trying to appropriate those correctly to the different taxing entities. And as we discussed in budget, it is an increase for us. I think we're going from around five thousand, it's changed to a little over sixty-one thousand in this agreement. They did put in a clause in this agreement to retain the same rate for the next four years to be our share. I know in discussing this with Judge Huckabee, when he looked, you know, kind of around the rest of the counties in Texas, the most common kind of methodology for assessing these fees is at one percent of the assessed property value. And the judge felt like that was too much of an increase. And so, again, they're just kind of looking to cover their actual cost for providing these services. And so, he used a little different methodology to bring that number down to what they felt was more applicable. So, staff is requesting council approve this agreement with E R F County.
Any questions for Mr. King?
Mr. King, did you feel like that the other fees were artificially low because of the length of the contract that we've been working with?
A hundred percent.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I think to say that we've had the deal of the century for a really long time is an understatement.
And staff recommends approval of this contract at this rate?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion that we approve the interlocal agreement with E R F County of assessment and collection of taxes.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Nix. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm just going to keep you talking. Consider authorizing city manager to issue.
What?
Consider authorizing city manager to issue notice of intent to annex a portion of Tech dot right away at the intersection of FM twenty-three oh three and State Highway one oh eight. Mr. Gillis, here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, council. You might recall that we recently went through a process very similar to this with the right-of-way annexation of the railway on the northeast part of town. This is in relation to an intersection that is controlled by Tech dot at twenty-three oh three, Foreign Market twenty-three oh three, and State Highway one oh eight. You might recall the La Paloma development that is currently underway there. And at this intersection, Tech dot is requiring the installation of a signal light. So, staff met and consulted with our attorney, and we came to the conclusion that we didn't really feel that we could annex the intersection, or we couldn't really move forward with the agreement to work with the developer and Tech dot in an advance funding agreement for that signal installation unless we actually controlled the intersection and had that intersection within our own city limits. And so, tonight, we are asking authorization for the city manager to proceed with the notice of intent to annex a portion of the Tech dot right-of-way. We have spoken with Tech dot. We've also spoken with the developer. They understand this is a process. We requested and have now received a survey of that intersection. Letter can go out as early as tomorrow if the city manager is authorized. That would put the sixty-one day period expiring at the November meeting. And so, it would be very tight, but we could actually come back in November and take action to actually annex this into our city limits. That would allow us to enter the advanced funding agreement with developer and Tech dot and basically escrow funds from the developer as we work with Tech dot on the signal installation. And I'm a little fuzzy on all those details, so I may have to lean on Mr. Williams if we get too deep into questions, but I will be glad to try to answer anything that you may have for me. Thank you.
Any questions for Steve?
Just in thirty seconds or less. Tech dot doesn't do agreements with private developers. Tech dot does agreements with local governmental entities. And local governmental entities do agreements with developers. So, that's why we have to jump in the middle of it. So, if we're willing to take in this intersection in, then we do an agreement with the developer. They deposit what the amount of money is that costs to put the red light in. And then we take that money and we do an agreement with Tech dot, and that's how the light's paid for. But they won't. They require local government to get in the middle of it. And so, for us to get in the middle of it, we kind of feel like that needs to be part of the city. So, but that will get a significant improvement at that intersection.
And the developer will ultimately fund that improvement through the City of Steenville?
At a hundred percent.
A hundred percent. Okay. Thank you. I thought that was correct. Wanted to make sure.
This will be a three-way stop. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Correct.
I mean, they're designing it right now, though. We're gonna lie on what it ends up looking like.
Any other questions? It's a pleasure of the council.
Mayor, I'd make the motion to authorize the city manager to proceed with the notice of intent to annex a portion of the Tech dot right-of-way at the intersection of FM twenty-three oh three and State Highway one oh eight.
I have a motion by Mr. Nix, second by Ms. Smith. Any other discussion? All those in favor? We actually need to step back one more time on agenda item number two. We, Mr. Nix, I don't know if you want to amend your motion here, but that should have been for two zero two five dash R dash sixteen.
Sixteen. I beg your pardon. Okay. Yes, I will amend my motion to so reflect two oh two five R dash sixteen.
Second.
Once again, we have a motion by Mr. Nix, a second by Ms. Smith. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Next item, consider approval of ordinance annexing city-owned parcels R seven eight four three nine, a portion of R two eight six four eight, and R two four three four zero. Mr. King.
Thank you, sir. You may recall, in April of two thousand twenty-five, we came forward asking for authorization for the city manager to pursue annexation of some city-owned parcels out by the Clark Regional Airport. So, that was granted in April. We have now got our hands on some surveys and meets and bounds to draft the ordinance, which is in your packet. After some further research, we noticed that in our own ordinance, in our charter for the city to extend the city limits, there's actually a process here where tonight we will just simply be introducing the ordinance. Then when they have a thirty-day notice of notice of objection, and then at the end of the thirty-day notice of objection, once that expires, we will then come back for final action on the ordinance itself. So, that will be a future agenda item. Tonight, we are, by our own charter, simply required to introduce it. So, with that, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, be glad to answer any questions. This is for the three parcels between the south end of the runway and Highway sixty-seven. And we have some maps provided in your packet, which is titled September two, Annexation B. There are actually three parcels there. The blue one is a portion of two eight six four eight. The yellow one is parcel seven eight four three nine. And then the green parcel is parcel two four three four zero. And through this ordinance, and assuming no objections, we will extend the city limits to take in those three city-owned parcels. Thank you.
Any questions for Steve? We don't need action on this, correct?
Well, I think that appropriate way, it sure wouldn't be wrong to lay it on the table. Table, we've got to bring it back up. And the way it's written, it says consider approval. So, maybe table is a little probably.
Okay. Well, I will make the motion to table the approval of ordinance annexing city-owned parcels R seven eight four three nine, a portion of R two eight six four eight, and R two four three four zero.
Second.
We'll give that to Mr. Nix. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next item, consider approval of purchase of pedestrian hybrid beacons for Harbin Drive and Tarleton Street crosswalk. Mr. King?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, and we had discussed this also as part of the budget hearing back in August. We just recently, there's been some pedestrian hybrid beacons installed out on Fry Street, out by the new stadium. Been discussing with Public Works, the installation of the same kind of beacons where we installed a big crosswalk from where we did Harbin Drive, right there at Interbank and crossing by Tarleton Street. And so, we're trying to move forward with that. And so, what you have here tonight is we're requesting approval to go ahead and purchase that equipment at fifty-five thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars. And if you approve that, we'll get them ordered. And it's like the lead time is twelve to fourteen weeks, but at least we'll get them and get them installed.
Any questions for Mr. King?
In addition to the purchase price, Jason, there's an installation cost of twenty-three thousand dollars. Is that correct?
That's the lowest quote that we've got for the installation. Yes.
So, altogether, we'd be looking at about seventy-eight thousand dollars.
All in, yes, sir. But tonight, I'm just asking you to purchase the equipment.
Understood.
And these are similar to the ones on Fry Street by the stadium?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. King? It's a pleasure of the council.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I move that we approve purchase pedestrian hybrid beacons for Harbin Drive, Tarleton Street crosswalk.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Greenlaw, second by Ms. Turfy. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, sir. Moving on. Steve, first item, we consider approval of ordinance of voluntary annexation of approximately five point zero one plus minus one acre located at the east of U S two eighty-one and north of County Road one seventy-seven.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, council. So, we're asking for the ability to move forward with the voluntary annexation of five point zero one acres located east of two eighty-one and north of County Road one seventy-seven. If it is annexed in by the city council tonight, it will then go to planning and zoning for the assignment of zoning, and then back to city council for final zoning designation. That has to occur within six months after action of annexing into the city. You might recall, we recently annexed a we recently annexed a portion of the Fort Worth and Western Railway, uh, in that same vicinity through that action that gave, uh, this property contiguous, um, border, uh, with the city limits. And so they have provided a voluntary annexation request. A municipal service agreement has been drafted, uh, which is also included in your packet. And we are ready to move forward with that if the council so desires. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Steve? Can I get a motion?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I would move that we authorize the process for the voluntary annexation of five point oh one acres, uh, in ordinance two oh two five dash oh twenty-four.
Second. We got a motion by Mr. Nick, second by Mr. Reese Man. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We're just growing Steenville today.
Yes, sir.
All right. Uh, application number, uh, PD eight nine nine eight. Um, the developer has asked that we table this, uh, until the October seventh meeting. Uh, so I will make the motion that we table, uh, this, uh, request.
Second.
Motion by me, second by Mr. Doug. All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to item number twelve. Uh, William Lambert is requesting a rezone of property located at thirteen eighty-five Swan, parcel R three three five two nine, being S six two zero zero South Side Edition Block ten, lots two and three of the city of Steenville, E. Ruff County, Texas, from industrial to multifamily residential R three.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, council. Mr. Lambert is requesting for a rezone, uh, from industrial to multifamily. This property, uh, by the twenty fifty plan is designated as community core. And when we read about the community core designation, it allows for medium density and diverse housing types, along with, uh, hotel businesses in the area as well. So this would conform to the twenty fifty plan. Uh, you might have noticed that over the past, oh, year or so, we have taken similar action in this vicinity by rezoning industrial to multifamily. This single lot, uh, does allow for adequate, uh, lot dimensions to, uh, move forward with the multifamily development at twenty-four units per acre. It's certainly not a one-acre parcel, but they can, uh, do the, the development, uh, on the ratio of whatever that property falls out to be. It's got a lot of depth to it. Um, it's approximately one half mile from the campus, Tarleton campus, so, uh, good location for what they're proposing. With that, be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions for Steve?
Mr. Killen, what is some of the other development around this particular parcel?
So we've had some rezoning, but no, uh, actual construction taking place, to my knowledge, in that, in that area. But I think they're positioned, uh, to move forward should they desire to submit plans and, and go through the process.
Okay. Have we had any letters of opposition?
No, sir. No letters of opposition. And I, I failed to mention, sir, the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission did convene on August twentieth, twenty twenty-five, and by unanimous vote of seven to zero, recommended the city council approve the rezone requests. Apologize.
Steve, did you say there were, there's, there are apartments around this area?
I'm sorry, sir.
There are apartments around this area?
Uh, we have rezoned some property to position for that. I'm not aware of any existing apartments in that, um, vicinity right now. Uh, maybe to the south, but not on that same side of the street.
It looks like from the aerial photo, uh, Ms. Killen, that, uh, there's some apartments at, uh, in parcel thirteen twenty-one.
Yes, sir. On, on the south side, and then we, also on the Lillian Swan development, we've developed some there. Also have some on, uh, I believe Long Street that cuts next to the, the, uh, cemetery. So now I get my bearings a little better. Uh, yes, this is an area that's resulted in quite a, quite a few developments.
I drove, I drove this area the other day, kind of looking at this parcel and, uh, and everything. It looks like, uh, what they're requesting would fit very well.
Most of those developments over there have been, uh, townhome-focused with single lot developments of the townhomes after being replatted and, um, so, single-family townhome development. But this one is specifically asking for R three, which would be five units or more per building.
Any other questions for Steve? Um, now going to open this up to public hearing for application number RZ nine zero zero three seven. Is there anybody here to speak for or against this project? Here in nine, I will close the public hearing and consider approval, uh, of ordinance rezoning property located at thirteen eighty-five Swan, parcel R three three five two nine, being S six two zero zero South Side Edition Block ten, lots two and three of the city of Steenville, E. Ruff County, Texas, from industrial to multifamily residential R three.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I move, uh, that we approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero dash twenty-six.
Twenty-five.
Two-five.
Excuse me, twenty, two-five.
Second.
We're off, we're off a number.
I got a motion by Mr. Cook and a second by Mr. Turfy. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to nominations committee. Ms. Nick?
Nominations committee met on August nineteenth to review applications for the, um, in Board of Adjustments, we had one advocate, and that was Gabe, Gabriel Woods, and he's here tonight for his interview. So, Mr. Woods, if you don't mind stepping up to the podium for us.
Sure.
Mr. Woods, do you mind stating your address for us?
Uh, it's nine zero one North Charlotte Avenue, Steenville.
Have you, uh, served on any boards or commissions before? If so, uh, which ones and when?
Nope. No boards or commissions.
Um, why have you decided to apply to serve now?
Um, you know, it seems like a good opportunity. Been looking for opportunities to contribute. And, uh, it seems, it's hard to say fun, but it, it does seem kind of fun.
Watch your tongue. And the only issue that came up when we discussed your application at the committee meeting was your availability. Do you have an issue being at meetings that are at four thirty?
No, not at all. No problem. Uh, discussed all that with my team and, and.
No worries. It's the only thing that really was of a concern.
That's understandable. No, no worries, sir.
Does anybody have any other questions or concerns for Mr. Woods? With that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Mr. Woods to alternate one on Board of Adjustments.
Second.
We got a motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Nick. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Woods, for willing to serve.
All right. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you, sir.
You said it's gonna be fun. We'll check in with you in six months.
Public Works Committee, Mr. Nick.
Uh, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I would like to ask that we table this item for, uh, and refer it back to committee. There's been some information that we've learned that we probably need to investigate before we take formal action. The committee did recommend it, but I think we have additional information that was not available at that time. I think it would, uh, be wise for us to follow all of the information and come back at, after another committee meeting to hear that. So I would make the motion to table that and refer to committee.
Second.
We got a motion by Mr. Nick to table, and a second from Mr. Greenlaw. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Harris, financial reports.
Mayor, council, this is the, uh, budget review for the period ending July thirty-first, uh, twenty twenty-five. Uh, we are seven months into the, not seven, ten months into the fiscal year. Um, the financial indicators are about where we would anticipate them to be. So, um, for property tax, um, we received forty thousand in property tax in July. And that's resulted in a four hundred and thirty-one thousand increase over the funds collected last fiscal year to date. Um, we've collected over a hundred percent of our budget, and that's about, um, ninety-nine thousand more than we anticipated. We received eight hundred and sixteen thousand in sales tax in July. Uh, that resulted in a two hundred and five thousand, or two and a half percent more than the funds collect, collected last fiscal year to date. Um, we've collected eighty-eight percent of our budget, and that's about four hundred and sixty-three thousand more than anticipated. Of the forty million, um, revenue received to date, fifty-seven was percent, uh, percent was received in our general fund, and twenty-six was received in our wastewater, uh, water wastewater fund. Four percent was received in our landfill fund, and then three percent in our debt service and our stormwater drainage fund, then, um, two percent in our capital projects, uh, hot fund and our TIF fund. We've received ninety-four percent of our total budgeted revenue through July. And that's about four point three million more than anticipated. That's due to taxes, licenses and permits, charges for services, interest income, and under other revenue. We received five hundred and ninety-four thousand more revenue through July of, um, than July of last fiscal year to date, and that's due to taxes, licenses and permits, charges for services and other revenue. Of the thirty-six million dollars spent today, forty-nine was percent was expended in our general fund, thirty-five percent was expended in our water wastewater fund, four percent was expended in our stormwater drainage fund, and three percent was expended in the debt service fund and our landfill fund. We have expended sixty-seven percent of our total budgeted expenditures through July, which is eight point six million less than anticipated. That's due to personnel, contractual and capital outlay. We've spent nine point seven million less on expenditures through July than last fiscal year to date, and that's due to our capital outlay. As far as CETA, they have received eighty percent, eighty-eight percent of their budgeted revenue through July, which is sixteen percent less than last fiscal year to date. That's due to interest income and thirty-three, um, thousand, uh, more than anticipated, and that's due to taxes. CETA has spent an overall, overall forty-nine percent of their budgeted expenditures through July, and that's seventy-one thousand more than last fiscal year to date. And that's due to personnel and capital outlay, and three hundred and ninety-two thousand less than anticipated. That's due to contractual capital outlay and grant dispersments. Any questions?
Any questions for Mark? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next up, uh, CETA report, uh, Mr. Sanford.
Hello.
Good to see you guys. Thank you so much for, uh, all that you do. We appreciate you very, very much. Um, I've got a few things I want to talk about today. Uh, I always like to start off with some fun stuff. Makes me feel either old or young, I'm not sure, but, uh, for those football fans, Terry Bradshaw is seventy-eight today. I don't know how that's possible. Um, if you're a NCIS fan, Mark Harmon, Leroy Jethro Gibbs, he's seventy-four today. Didn't realize that. Jimmy Connors, when I was growing up, he was a big tennis, tennis player there, seventy-three. Uh, big football fan for me and our family, but Eric Dickerson, who was always one of the greatest running backs, you know, sixty-five today. And, uh, for those, uh, ladies who like, uh, kind actors, Keanu Reeves is sixty-one today. So he's, uh...
What are you trying to tell us, Joe?
Yeah, I, uh, just saying, you ain't getting any younger. I'm not getting any younger, is what I'm saying. You know, I was just amazed by that because, you know, things pass by so fast. And, and the things that we only have time to do in our life is, is important. And I'll get to some of that in a minute. But I, I did want to mention that, uh, there's some things that, as I was going through the this day in history part, that I always like to give to you guys and try to make some kind of correlation between what we're doing and these things. You know, it's hard to connect the dots. But I thought I'd do it because the first few that I found, in thirty-one B.C., the Battle of Actium ended the Roman Republic. In eleven ninety-two, the Treaty of Jaffes was signed, ending the Third, uh, Crusade. In sixteen sixty-six, a great fire of London destroying eighty percent of London. In eighteen sixty-four, the Union captured and occupied Atlanta, uh, ending the Atlanta Campaign in the Civil War. In nineteen forty-five, VJ Day, formal surrender of Japan, signed aboard the USS Missouri, marking the end of World War Two. I say all these things because with everything that ends, something new begins. And so I got to thinking about that a little bit with the opportunities that when something ends, when something else begins. And if you think back just a couple of years, just a few years ago, in twenty-seven, twenty-six seventy-five West Washington, it was empty land for hundreds of years, with just a sliver of mobile homes that were there. Now, we look at it, and it's a bustling power center of twelve stores, ten stores and two restaurants. Across the street and a little bit over is, uh, was an empty piece of land at twenty-seven ninety-eight West Washington, had pack and mail there for a little while. And then, uh, now it has two new restaurants and a brand-new Cavender's Boot City that opened up on Friday. Uh, if you haven't been in, you need to check it out. Um, and the good news with that is pack and mail's still in business, just moved to another spot. So we continue to grow that area. A little bit further down at the twenty-eight sixty-five block, empty land now is a restaurant with Panda Express, a grocery store, Aldi. Go up, skip and jump over to two eighty-one corridor, you have, uh, what was empty land is now Tractor Supply and Amazon Distribution, and Atwood's Ranch and Home, soon to be a gas station and convenience store. Trojan Steel is out there and concrete plant and many other things on their way. Had empty stuff, and it's continuing to develop, to develop over and over and over. These things provide us a lot of opportunities to continue some things. Those that have been around us a lot know that we also have some other big projects we can't announce yet because they're still in the process of getting worked out and hopefully getting to the finish line. As those projects come, they'll continue to develop different parts of our city that make our town even bigger and better and brighter and more wonderful. And we get this because we go to these conferences and we go to these other things, and you guys do your job, and people in this audience do their job of trying to get out there and promote our town. And I was moved a little bit, as many of you were, by the Tarleton game this last, uh, Friday, the last football game. Uh, if you know that, you know, just for a hundred and twenty-six previous years, education was a thing, and Tarleton always got a, a little bit of promotion, a little bit of good things. Some other sports, uh, had some great promotion and, and things. And, 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 you know, those are great for us. Um, one thing that you, you have to understand is that when we play these legacy teams, and in this case, it was Army, when you play these legacy teams, they get you mentioned. When you win these legacy games, they get you noticed. Within fifteen minutes after the conclusion of Friday's football game, I had seven different texts or calls from developers across the nation who recognized Tarleton, Steenfield, and the things that are going on here, which is pretty cool. But that was only a part of it because if you watched the game, they only mentioned the word Steenfield a few times. They mentioned Tarleton a bunch. They'd only mentioned Steenfield a few times. But if you were able to watch ESPN a little bit longer, and you watched the Scott Van Pelt edition of the ESPN, uh, or excuse me, SportsCenter, uh, you'd notice that he led off his whole thing with the lads from Steenfield. And then he talked about Steenfield over and over, even said Steenfield with only one S, which is a problem we often have to correct people on. He gets an average of six hundred and seventy-three thousand viewers per episode that's heard Steenfield, Texas. So with everything that happens in our community that is good, same with bad. There's no bad press sometimes, but the good is always better. Uh, it helps to promote Steenfield and the good things that are happening. When something didn't happen before, it's now happening again. So I wanted to kind of conclude with, with something that was kind of cool here. Uh, as we continue to, you know, and it was great on the Cowgirl Capital on, on September eighteenth and so many other things. We are a city of champions, uh, in so many ways. But there was something that moved me last week, one, exactly one week ago today. Uh, there's a, there's an episode on Good Morning America called, or there's a special, a section they have called My Kind of Town, and it spoke, focusing on kindness. About seventy years ago, uh, there was a little girl named Maria that was dropped off at a place in Belmont, North Carolina. And her mom didn't want her because she had developmental, uh, issues. And she was just a baby, but she was never going to grow up to be the kind of person that the mom wanted. So she dropped her off. And fortunately, this group called the Sisters of Mercy took her in and said, yes. And they took her in and, uh, and cared for her, and thus was born a place called Holy Angels. Now, this is kind of close to me, so if I get a little emotional, I apologize. My wife happens to work for this place. After about ten years, uh, she's the only remote worker in the entire organization. It's the largest place on the East Coast that celebrates abilities, enables individuals who are differently able to gain life skills, achieve meaningful, meaningful work, and build a sense of belonging within a community. And those are the ones that are not able, are medically fragile, that are in the, the hall there. These are also those that get to work at one of their five businesses. And one of these businesses was featured on Good Morning America a week ago. And they came in and talked with all of those folks that, uh, have, have some, you know, some abilities, not disabilities, but abilities that are a little bit different than ours. And they got to go in there, and the whole thing was a focus on kindness. The whole deal was to focus on how these people are bringing joy to everybody that they meet, everybody that they serve through these five businesses, and everybody that they get to come in contact with. They have a welcoming spirit. They highlight the kindness and the greatness of their own community, not just of themselves. So I- So as I leave, I just wanted to encourage, now that we are not seventy years, but a hundred and seventy years plus into our existence as an organization, or as a city, that we continue to exhibit kindness to each other. It's not that hard. The the easy thing, of course, is to not be kind, and some people do that sometimes. But I think this is an opportunity for us to always use Stephenville, Texas as being the kindest place on earth. And I just encourage you guys, I thank y'all for what you do, but I want to encourage everybody watching to also just be kind. Thanks.
Thank you, Joe. Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the considered...
Motion by Ms. Smith, thinking about Mr. Cook. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Comments by city manager?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, so September's going to be a busy month, and we're going to start that off this week. Thursday will be our first night of the Stephenville Citizens Academy. That'll go for nine weeks on Thursday night, six to nine. So if you want to stop by, feel free to stop by, and we'll get you introduced to that group. I think there's seventeen participants in there, which was a couple more than Mr. Brown had originally planned for. So that'll be a fun time and a good group. Of course, Friday night, we get to have our first home game in our first very own stadium here in Stephenville, and that's going to be an outstanding evening and event. Of course, Saturday, East Tarleton's first home game, and certainly after the win last week, that's probably going to bring a lot of folks to town. You've got Coffee and Cars at the Courthouse, Armor Market, our Western Swing Festivals this weekend, lots of things going on just this weekend, and then later in the month, Ranch Rodeos, Cowboy Capital Pro Rodeo, Family Weekend is in this month. So it's going to be a busy month with lots of folks visiting Stephenville. And that's all I have to say.
Well, I think you took everybody's talking points, but Mr....
Well, I'm pleased to add on to what he said. So we do have the Farmer's Market and Co-, I have my whole list that I... Farmer's Market and Coffee and Cars, and then the Western Swing Festival is, starts Saturday, and is Saturday and Sunday. We've got performers Jody Nix, Sleep at the Wheel, Jake Hooker, and Bob Wills, Texas Playboys. It's free to attend, and there will be food trucks, so please come out to the Birdsong Amphitheater. And September thirteenth, we've got the Art and Wine Walk downtown. September nineteenth is Family Weekend, and we also have Alley Bingo over here off of College Street. The Rodeo Heritage Week is September eighteenth through the twenty-eighth, and the Ranch Rodeo is September twentieth and twenty-first. I had never, I've never been to a Ranch Rodeo, but I'm really looking forward to it after watching YouTube and TikTok videos. It's, yeah, it looks really cool. The Arts of the Cowgirl is September eighteenth, and the PRC Rodeo is September twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth, and I want to congratulate Todd Whitten and his coaching staff, and as an alumni, bleeding purple, and I'm so proud of what what they did Friday night, and proud of our Yellow Jackets that also brought home the win. So that's all I've got.
Mr. Cook?
No, no, sorry.
Nothing left. Now, a little different take, and something like what Jeff was talking about, we don't think about these things too often, but every mention of Stephenville or wherever you go leaves an impression, leaves a, somewhat of a positive thought. Rita and I had the opportunity the last couple of weeks to be on a trip. Well, we were in Utah. We both had on Tarleton shirts. We were kicking around there in this little town of Blanding, Utah. Not much in Blanding, Utah, but they had a nice hardware store back there, out there, Ace is a big deal. And we walked into Blanding, and this guy said, Tarleton? I said, yeah. He said, I'm from Hamilton originally. And I thought, what are you doing here? Building a house out there. And so we got into a discussion with regard to Tarleton and Stephenville and all the other kind of stuff. We went on and went to Salt Lake City. We were staying in this downtown place, hotel, apartment deal. Walked in, got on the elevator. We also had on our Tarleton stuff. And a nice couple from there said, I went to Tarleton. And I said, really? He said, oh, yeah. I said, now, we're out here in Salt Lake City? And he said, this is, this is super. And so we got into a long discussion with regard to them and coming from here and moving out there, and I thought, well, is that not interesting? Two times, two times, practically, in one day, in one day, and everything because we had, only because we had on Tarleton shirts, you know? Otherwise, I mean, they wouldn't have paid any attention to us or anything like that. So we wore those Tarleton shirts a lot during this. That was, I thought that was an interesting thing, and and it also says something, I think, about Tarleton getting around and and Stephenville getting around, because all of, there was never just a Tarleton, it was Tarleton and Stephenville always, which was really interesting, really interesting. So I thought that was good. Congratulations to Tarleton on their win, to Stephenville Yellow Jackets on their win. Look forward to those two home games. They're coming up Friday and Saturday, and along with all the other activities that are going on in town, and there's a lot of it. So looking forward to that. That's all I have.
Mr. Ruisman?
Well, I guess everything, taking everything I have right now, but I'll say a couple of things. One thing is that I think it's very important that we realize this and that. In all the years that I have been all over the country, and at meetings all over, all over, from the East Coast to the West Coast, people can say Tarleton. But the most important thing is, the first thing, they say, where's Tarleton? It's in Stephenville. And that's what's important, is our city. And Tarleton's a great part of our city. But every time, everywhere you go, people want to know where you're from. Well, we're from Stephenville, Texas. And I think that's important, because we have a, we have a great tradition in this city. We have a winning attitude in this city, and it doesn't matter what it is, athletics or people just working every day to make the city better. We have a winning attitude in this city, and I think that's what's so important, is that we are the city of champions, and I thank people all over the state, and now they're knowing it nationally, that this is a very special city that is made up of people that believe in winning and winning the right way. And so proud of, proud of Tarleton, I'm proud of Stephenville, Texas, and the Yellow Jackets and the Honeyabees, and and I'm proud of the rodeo tradition that we have in this community. We're very lucky to have what we have in this community. And I think that I see nothing but a bright future moving forward again, as we move forward for the city of Stephenville.
First, I want to thank and congratulate Fire Marshal Greg Trump for his service to
our community for the past twenty-five years. He is retiring from the Stephenville Fire Department on this Friday, and that is a huge accomplishment. We just want to thank him for all of his years of service to us here in our community. Second, flag football and volleyball seasons are underway, get started this week, practices are already underway down at the park. The final phase of the inclusive playground is installed and open. I want to thank, making special thanks to Ways Connections and our Parks Department for making this happen and possible for our community. It is a great asset for our community and our kids. And I'd also like to welcome our new Park Superintendent, Mr. Troy Jones. And to remind everybody, the last day to register to vote for the November election is October sixth, and we have plenty of seats open on boards and commissions here at the city, so if you'd like to apply, you can find it online at stevenvilletx.gov. That is all.
Just wanted to say, this is a very exciting time of year, and a good time for people to get out and experience the city, and, you know, support these different, all this, all this stuff that we have going on. There's all kinds of opportunity for you to engage with your neighbors and make some new friends, see some things. You know, go out and, you know, go see a football, a junior high football game or a JV football game. Encourage these people wherever, you know, any way you can get involved in the city, go out there and take advantage of this great time of year.
Mr. Next?
I want to echo a little bit of what Matty said. I want to thank Mr. Wood for volunteering, and I want to encourage others to serve on our boards and commissions as well. There's a wealth of information there, and you will learn this, about how the city operates, some of the rules, regulations, requirements, and some of the things that go on day-to-day that many of our citizens don't know. And the best way for them to be involved is to be on these boards and commissions and see firsthand and learn how things function, and sometimes why they function the way they do. But we need to, I want to encourage everyone to be involved, and that is an excellent way to become involved and get your feet wet, so to speak, in some of the city operations and some of the goings-on in the city. And I think there's going to be more and more of those things happening as we continue to grow and as we continue to expand, and we need good people who are willing to put their time and their effort into it to make good decisions for all of us.
Thank you, Mr. Next. I do want to mention that we have the grand opening of the EECU Arena this weekend with Ms. Diane Morgan. She, I saw her on Facebook several times, saying Stephenville correctly, and saying Stephenville a lot, so it was, it was good to hear that. And then the next weekend, no stranger to Stephenville, Texas, or the Stephenville Police Department, Coach Wetzel will be here the weekend after that. I know I've heard him mention Stephenville's finest at D.C.'s Arena and other places, so he's looking forward to seeing you guys.
Looking forward to seeing you.
With that being said, in compliance with the provisions of Texas Open Meetings Law, Subchapter D, Government Code, Vernon's Texas Code, United Ordinance, with Section 551. dot zero seven four Personnel Matters to deliberate the deployment, employment, evaluation, reassignment due to use discipline or dismissal of public officer or employee, two with municipal judge. Section 551. zero seven six Declaration Regarding Security Devices or Security Audits to deliberate the deployment or specific occasions for inflammation of security personnel or devices or a security audit. And Section 551. zero eight seven Declaration Regarding Economic Development Negotiations, Project PL. I will now recess into executive session. We shall be back.
Second.
Motion second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any other action?
Mayor Protam motion to approve amended MOU with Stevensville SISD for SROs.
Second.
Motion second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any other action?
Mr. Mayor Protam, I make the motion to authorize an incentive agreement as discussed in executive session. And authorize staff to execute.
Motion second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That is it. And I will adjourn at 7:15. I will adjourn us from the Seagull City Council meeting.
Good.